Recording in progress.
They'll turn red just the same right here and uh. Let's.
Good afternoon, everyone. Today is Tuesday, January twenty one at four o'clock P M. We're here in the H S T School Board Boardroom for a work session of the Anchor School District School Board. Present in the boardroom is member Donnelly, myself, your Chair Carl Jacobs, member Dora Wilson, member Kelly Lessons, member Margot Bellamy, present online is member Andy Holloman. And we will announce when member Higgins joins us. We've conducted our call to order and roll call. I will move to discussion B one, facility repurposing plan. Dr. Bryant and team, the floor yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So the purpose of today's work session is to discuss the repurposing plans for two facilities, which would be Lakewood and Unaca Valley. A final recommendation from me to the board will be delivered by our first meeting in February as a non-action item. But before we get there, the purpose of today is really to walk the board through our various options, to walk through pros and cons. We'll present some scenarios for which we've done quite a bit of analyses, and there may be others that board members would like to discuss, so we're happy to do that. I'd like to get your feedback before I prepare that final recommendation within the next few weeks. And again, with any decision point that we make, there are pros and cons, so really the point of today is for you to provide me and the team with some feedback as we prepare that recommendation. So Mr. Anderson will walk us through a few slides.
Okay, good evening. Is this working? Oh, I did it. So the first thing I wanted to do was refresh everyone's memory. Went through the original board memo zero seven three. America helped me go through the amendments, make sure I captured it. Just to make sure after ten amendments hit the floor that everyone's still tracking what the final decisions were. And then we'll be talking at least on one of them. Perhaps more about possibly some unintended consequences. And just try to get the board's feedback so we can move forward. So everyone knows that the board memo after all of the amendments did approve closure for Lakewood and Unaca Valley. And then there was the very first amendment included. All those you can see on the screen. We'll start working on Wonder Park, Totem Lot. Those kind of things over the next couple of months. And build up a plan that meets the intent of those. As well as looking at piloting some type of transportation system that may be able to allow students to leave their boundary schools and go to schools with special programs and or charter schools. And naturally, of course, we'll do an after-action review this summer. After we've made that transition of all the school equipment and curriculum to the gaining schools. One October might be a a little bit early if we're trying to get feedback from all the principals as to how they got integrated into their new schools. But we certainly will have something. Then, of course, there was the amendment that was split out from Amendment One. Having Tudor Montessori become a K six next year. As you look at these, one of them focused on making sure that we have one more school for closure or repurposing at least. And then it was very specific in that we were to not exclude special programs like immersion and optional. And to ensure that we look at those programs as well, and of course, secondary schools.
So as we looked at Amendment Number Four, we pretty much looking at the reauthorization or authorization to close Unaca Valley and Lakewood. And being able to revisit those. If the legislature and governor corrected funding shortfalls prior to the second board meeting in February. We've been looking at what we need to get done in order to close the schools, and there's been kind of a some families at these schools thinking that the decision really hasn't been made yet. From comments from different people. And so we wanted to make sure that there's some things that really are causing some consternation that we're working through. But because of that particular amendment, it's causing some disruption in our processes. Now, first one is usually we and we have them all ready right now to send out to those students families about where they would be going next year. We would be doing that this week. Because the lottery opens on February first, and if like, we would want to give all of those families the opportunity that if they didn't like which school their students are going to, that they could actually access that lottery on February first. And then we have a lot of early staffing decisions. We have already gone out to Unaca Valley and Lakewood. Our H R department has been working with those staffs because we need to get those early staffing things done earlier than the regular staffing and and then towards the end of February is when that actually occurs. So we're really looking at making sure that that particular amendment, if it is what the will of the board is going to do. If we come back by the second meeting. And I need a little guidance as to should we go ahead and move forward? Because at this point, we are really wanting to move forward so that we because it it just backs things up way too much.
And the next one. And also, if you talk to the principals at the schools. There are a number of staff who believe that really the final decision won't be made until the end of February. And it's it's certainly. I'd really like to hold and discuss here. Because the rest of this brief is kind of pointless if we're not going to move forward or have any discussions and legitimately hold out until the end of February to see if the governor and the legislature can come up with a solution for funding our schools.
Member Lessons.
All right, I've successfully tried out the new system. Just a point of clarification, you mentioned the lottery. Which is a factor. It opens on February first. When I just checked, it doesn't close then. It looks like it closes March twentieth. Is that correct? So there's a bit of a window for families to consider the lottery. Yes, I just want to know if I'm correct in that.
That's that's correct.
Member Bellamy.
Well, Mr. Anderson, if I'm understanding correctly, do you want to know whether we go forward with the discussion or do we just wait? Is that the question?
Yes, because we'd like to get a board member in front of the board on the first meeting in February as non-action based off comments tonight. So we can make decisions on the repurposing plan on the second meeting in February. So we can go ahead and start getting all of the synchronization, the moving pieces, everything from field trips to swag bags for kids. Matching up friend groups, all those kind of things really start now and starting to pull it together. And I unfortunately, technically, if we follow specifically this amendment, we wouldn't we wouldn't be able to submit a memo on the first meeting in February. Because we would have to wait until after the second meeting in February to see what happens before we can even start the process moving forward. And it and it really puts us a couple of months behind. We're certainly a month behind.
I think so. I guess my question is, is it easier? Not easy, or none of this is easy. But it does it make sense for us to? I mean, to me, it makes sense for us to continue. And to because if we do get money, then we it's how hard is that to go back and put things in place?
Well, once you do early staffing. And now principals have worked. And they have staff that were at a closing school, and now they're expecting them, and the staff members are expecting them to go to their schools. And then at the end of February hypothetically. There's no early staffing if you're really going to wait it. I I'm sure the intent of this was I think unintended consequences are impacting our ability to move forward, and part of that was the discussions with staff on taking care of the staff of closing schools early before you do the main staffing events. And and as long as I have at least four board members who are okay with expecting a board memo on the first week of February with the repurpose plan, knowing that a decision is going to be made at the second meeting, then at least we're moving forward and we can have a lot of things in place. Otherwise, you could look at this amendment and say, don't do anything. And wait until the end of February, and we'll just see if you know, by incredibly large surprise, we got a $2,000 B S A increase.
I'm wondering if Marty would have any insight as far as the staffing piece if we were to go through with the February stuff and then go back.
See if I can pass my first test with the new microphone. Like, Sven said, we were out in the schools last week with talent management team. Surveying the staff, starting to collect their interest in where they'd like to go. We won't make any moves to place those folks until February twentieth. Right now is our proposed date for doing so. That's a preferred staffing timelines before any other displacements would will be notified or placed. But we wanted to make sure and take care of those staff if we are indeed closing those schools. If we are moving away from that plan, then the next sort of waypoint on the staffing timeline is right before spring break when we'd be considering general displacements. And so it would basically push any decisions into that sort of general pool for consideration at that point.
Another board discussion on the timeline being proposed by administration specifically to have a memorandum related to repurposing on our agenda as a non-action item at our first meeting in February? Or is there is there any board members who object to the proposal for the timeline? That would be a time to mention it. Member Higgins, I see a question in your face. Go ahead.
Yeah, let me make sure I understand how to do this right. Uh, the proposal was basically we would act on it in the second in February, but if the legislature after that point in time decides to approve the, you know, couple thousand dollars B S A type increase. That we at that point, we won't reverse it because we get kind of sent a message out to the community and to the legislature too. That you have a deadline. If you if you want to save the schools, provide the funny money and be upfront with it. And you want to you want to say, I don't have a problem with saying the second meeting in February, we'll make a decision contingent on that. But then you want to basically pull back that commitment and or we just saying, let's commit, let's go ahead and make a plan, say, this is what we're going to do contingent on, and then we can reverse it if that happens.
Yes, that's that's correct. What we what we want is to move forward is if those schools are closing. Put all the systems in place. If a fifty-two-year miracle occurs and the state of Alaska provides the largest funding they've ever provided. Then the board by this amendment could reverse and do a stop on all actions, but to not do anything. At this point, will put us behind. Especially when you're looking at the focus on taking care of kids. We did a lot of stuff very early on for the Abbott Loop kids to make sure that everything was going to be in place for them to go to their new schools. We certainly didn't wait until March to start moving things forward. We started actually now.
So I'll put myself in the speaking queue, and then I'll go back to member lessons. So as the one of the drafters of the amendment that we're discussing, I'll say that one, I want to highlight that this amendment didn't just call for the legislature to address education funding. I would also ask for the legislature to implement a law sustainable long-term fiscal plan. As we are already hearing, although folks are just now getting to their offices and after being sworn in that the state lacks adequate revenue to effectuate reasonable policy positions, which not only is adequate education funding, but also funding to pay state employees, which is why a salary study that indicates that they are due significant raises hasn't been released by our administration. There are a number of needs facing our state, and we can't afford any of them. And so the an ask for education funding and which was why this amendment was very important to me should be paired with asking our state to get their fiscal house in order. And so I think that was kind of the underlying thought, and I was grateful the board approved it. With that said, I don't see that we can assume bipartisan cooperation, given recent legislative performance. And so I think we should err on the side of needing to go forward with this plan. So for me, the timeline being proposed is appropriate. With that said, we'll go to member Lessons.
And thank you for that. Maybe this is a procedural comment or question. Would it be procedurally incorrect for the administration to move forward with preparing the memo for the board's consideration, non-action, the first meeting in February? You know, ready to be action in the second meeting in February, and if that fifty-two-year miracle were to occur. There would be a memo that was ready that the board could vote against or ignore or redact from the agenda itself.
But we we wouldn't be here tonight if we didn't think that procedurally it was okay to move forward. What we wanted was board approval for us to do so. So you're not surprised next Tuesday or two weeks from today when you see the non-action memo. There's so many operational reasons why we need to move. And and if amazing things happen and the truth changes, then the truth changes.
I'll also add just for my purposes in that if if action, which aligns with this amendment, actually generates steam and and bears fruit. This board will know well before that process comes to an end. And we can generate additional meetings to discuss further and audible if need be. With that said, is there other discussion or are there board members who object to the timeline being proposed, which would absent objection, we can move on with the rest of the presentation. We'll go to member Wilson and member Bellamy.
So I have no objection, just just so I can clarify that. I do support the opportunity for the administration to have that extra time to plan. I think it's important to to make sure that that you have that time to plan and and give our our families and our staff in particular the opportunity to know what their their choices are, what their opportunities are coming up. So I would support the plan moving forward.
And member Bellamy.
Yes, thank you. I do support moving forward. We owe it to our kids and our family to move forward. And do what we can when we know that we can, we can affect some kind of change. But we can't keep our kids and families in limbo. We need to move forward. I think that's why Abbott Loop was so successful. And kids felt so welcomed and warm because we gave staff and families time to make the shift. And if that's not if that's, I mean, I don't have a fiscal ball and I'm I'm optimistic. But at the same time, a $2,000 B S A, we're not going to get a miracle. We're not going to get a miracle. So I think we owe it to our family. So I my vote would be, we're not voting, but my I would support moving forward.
Thank you, member Bellamy. Any other comments before we move on?
Yeah, just when we get the recommendations, we'll get recommendations of who you're proposing go into the facility. But you're also going to propose where the existing kids are going to go to and and give us a estimate of the cost associated. Because I mean, we heard that the part with, you know, Turnigan Elementary and other issues, what how the S B B S program will go. What we'll have to do in order to make that work good because that was so controversial for them. And and I'm concerned that whatever location we're going with, I want to make sure that that's that people are aware of that, and they get a chance to provide some feedback because it's going to impact their neighborhood schools too.
Sure. So in terms of where the students are going to go, it'll be in accordance with the briefings we gave, with the exception of S B B S, because it's such a small number that you could easily start identifying individuals, and we wouldn't do that. So we'll take care of the S B B S kids and we'll figure a way to brief it without violating. Once you get down to five, it could be really easy to identify somebody, and we we don't do that. But we will make sure that they have a school they're going to, but we wouldn't publicly probably talk about a group that's small.
In the original memo for the closure, it actually lays out where the kids from Lakewood go and where the kids from Unaca Valley go. So we have the list of those kids. And then there's a list of kids that live out of the zone for each of those schools. And so that's some of the work we have to do, and that's why we want to get them into the lottery stuff early on. So that's part of the stuff, like probably by the end of the week, we'd be looking at sending out letters to families to let them know where their kids will be pointed towards, or if we need to have more conversations with them because they're out of
That's really what drove tonight's meeting was we do plan on sending letters to all the families by the end of this week. Letting them know where their child is by school boundary going to be reassigned and what their other options are. We didn't want to wait a month, month and a half to do that. So families will know this weekend where their children are slated to go.
So if I understand correctly, you don't think we're going to run into a cost issue of redoing a school to be able to accommodate those children? That's a factor that the board should be aware of.
No, I do not. I mean, it's elementary to elementary. When it comes to charter schools moving in. That would be different. That would be individually working with each charter school principal to see what their short and long-term needs might be. But not elementary to elementary. It's really moving curriculum, desks as needed, cafeteria furniture. And the the first choice is the gaining schools for the losing school furniture. It's really a transportation event.
Yeah, I don't see any benefit to delaying the process, did not get it done in selection by in February, the second meeting, because that all we're doing is unnecessarily delaying it. And if we do get the issue, then we can always use the eraser at the other end of the pencil, and we'll figure out what we do then. But that would be a surprise at that point that no one's expecting.
I I do want to add on, Mr. Higgins, that there is there is some small costs to the move because we're just the transitional pieces. We need to have money for a bus to be able to bring the kids from one school to the other to do tours. We need to be able to do those activities, hold a eat family evening event and stuff. So it's very minimal amount of money. So it isn't zero, but but it isn't we're rebuilding a school.
Yeah, I just the feedback I got at one time was because of safety concerns and other things they had to do was this more substantial than that, and that's why I was asking that question.
Thank you, member Higgins. Not seeing any other discussion, Mr. Anderson, Mr. Gusterson, it sounds like you guys have consensus from the board, and please proceed with the rest of the presentation.
Thank you. I think everyone's familiar with Amendments Six and Seven. There are a few more that didn't pass, and of course, we do plan on coming back prior to fifteen April to discuss the merits of Inlevue being a K eight school. So President Holloman asked to make sure that I provided a good understanding of what are all of the programs and or schools in the facility in the district that are using leased facilities that really are looking for new homes, or we could provide them a new home out of a leased site merely to save money and better utilize the capacity we have left in our schools. So you can see at the very top, the ACT program, which we'll talk about later. That lease does expire at the end of June. We need to move them somewhere regardless for both of those leased costs. And so for that $400,000 roughly. We'll either look at potentially moving them well somewhere in a district-owned facility or a district, other district leased facility, and we'll go into a little bit of depth. Also, I think everyone is aware that Roca Shula's lease, which is the most expensive in the district among the charter schools, it expires at the end of August, which really, they either need to renew it, or we need to move them before the beginning of the school year. And then I I really did want to point out, because I don't know that everyone realizes that one of the reasons you you would move a charter school into a district-owned facility is our schools are custom-built and designed to support education, whereas the vast majority of leased spaces are not. And lunchrooms is just one of them. So we don't have, other than charter schools operating in district facilities, they don't have lunch programs. So when we talk about equity, it really is bigger than transportation. Some of those schools have a school store where they mark the price up a little bit where people can buy stuff from just to be able to provide some snacks to those who otherwise would qualify for free and reduced lunches. But there are no lunches available for them. We've tried numerous times to try to figure out how we could provide hot meals. But the National School Lunch Program says you either do it for all or none. So there was no way other than incurring debt to the General Fund of providing hot meals for families in economic need. So as we look to moving charter schools into our facilities, all of them have lunchrooms. We may have to modify a cafeteria a little bit, add some new equipment. But for the most part, that probably gets after equity a lot quicker and gives other people who otherwise wouldn't be able to go to one of these programs an option to go there, especially if they're looking at how does my kid eat during the day? So I did want to point that out, and you'll see both ACT and Rica Shul in follow-up slides. So these are the fund balances and the enrollments for each of our charter schools, and I just wanted to point out. So these are the fund balances and the enrollments for each of our charter schools. And I just wanted to point out that um. The impact that, that the district has had on the lack of a BSA adjustment and inflation-proof funding. Has over time really impacted our charter schools. Um, a- as well as it has the district. They're not immune from inflationary drivers. ANCCS, when we first had them sign the contract to go into Abbott Loop, part of that contract was putting the money into a school fund. Where they could start building up um, their fund balance. But when you look at Highland Academy, they, they really, their fund balance is, is extremely low. And really on, on none of them is it an exorbitant fund balance. Um, and I just thought it was something to think about between now and the next six weeks before decisions are made. As to how we talk to, I've been to three community council meetings in the last month or so. And in all of them, they asked me, why would, why would we put a charter school in? The first thing I explained to them is that they're all our kids, they're all ASD students. And then I started talking to them about this, um, the fund balance that, that quickly goes to zero. If we can't get them out of leased facilities over the next several years, or if we don't get um, a significant increase. In education funding. And in every case, there was a lot more heads nodding up and down when I was able to explain. You know, they're all ASD students, every one of them. And these buildings are ASD buildings, or at least managed by ASD. Uh, but the fund balance is what Andy and I and many others have seen really go down over time, with the exception of. ANCCS since they hit East High School and then Abbott Loop. So here's the revenue impact for the school closures. Naturally, this doesn't account for um, any modifications that might be. Needed on those buildings, depending on we, who, who we put there, um, or how we repurpose those buildings. But everyone, I think, is pretty comfortable with knowing that the whole harmless clause um, really allows you to get that. Smaller school size equivalent in terms of revenue for the first couple of years. Now, on this, the numbers are different if you're going to put that building into cold storage, because we still. Are paying electric bills like we are in Ursa Major for the next month or two, um, until we finally can shut off. Um, power and water to that school. But if it was charter schools going in. Um, then they would be taking over minor maintenance, utilities, all those kind of costs. And so roughly, as we build the budget over the next week, um, the preliminary budget. Um, you know, it really would be, this is about just under $2 million, which is not a lot. But when you're looking at 60-plus million, any $2 million you can find certainly is helpful.
So when we get to actually looking at the repurposing of the two buildings. We did a lot of research. We did a lot of looking at different programs. We looked at um, existing programs. Um, ANCCS, we looked at Whaley, um, we looked at um, different things for specific schools for Lakewood and Nunaca. I'd like to talk about um, Lakewood to begin with. Um, our recommendation is for Rukashula Charter School to go into Lakewood. And some reasons around that. Rukashula is our largest charter school for in-person learning um, in the district. They don't have a declining enrollment. Um, and they, we don't anticipate a declining enrollment in their near future. The school fits really well into that uh, facility. Um, again, we, like Jim said, their lease expires at the end of August, so it's pretty important that we have a decision for them. Um, looking at the other options, we're going to talk a little bit about Whaley here in a little bit. But, and then like ANCCS, that's really uh, needing to be closer to the east side of town with. Who, where the kids are located and the families are located. And so we really, uh, our, our recommendation will be Rukashula. Now, when we look at Nunaca Valley, again, we looked at everything. We looked at a lot of different options. And we have two options that we'd like to propose for you and kind of get an idea from you, which direction you all feel like would be the best. That you would feel comfortable with. The first recommendation would be Highland Academy. Currently Highland Academy. Is housed on the east end of this building. Um, as you saw, their, their fund balance is quite low. Um, they really aren't in a position where they uh, grow in the facility that they're in. And um, another thing with Highland Academy is if Highland moved to Nunaca Valley, we could also fix our ACT program. Um, problem, or we can move the ACT program down into this facility and have them here on the facility in the Ed Center. Ed Center is a really great spot for the ACT program, because it is right on a bus line. If we don't put ACT in this, eh, somewhere here on a bus line. We would end up putting them into like three high schools in the area. The problem with putting a kid, the ACT program in three high schools is we're really looking to move those students out of the high schools. That's why we have the ACT program. We want to get them into the community, into um, really getting them out to learn those life skills. If we were to move them into the high schools, we would then need to purchase some vehicles in order to transport because of the. Ability of the bus lines. Um, so that's one option. The second option we. Are putting out there is for Anchorage Stream Academy. Um, their current facility doesn't um, include growth options for them. Their charter has a growth. Um, goal of 300, currently they're at 183. Um, if we were to go that route, uh, we would still need to find somewhere for the ACT program for sure. The other thing that I want to back up for Highland Academy, the other thing that we're looking at is. We think we would have enough space for Highland Academy and possibly Family Partnership. In the facility at the end of this building. Family Partnership is currently um, in a lease in an, in a strip mall office. Buildings over off of Tudor. Um, and their. Their contract, their lease comes up here in a year or two, right? Yeah, a couple of years. So. Um, that's what we're looking at for uh. For the repurposing and we're going to be, you know, we're going to talk a little bit more here about these, but really uh. Kind of wanting to get your thoughts about if these options are one, there's any particular option that you would think would be a, a better option than the other. Um, some, just kind of looking a little further down, we have, if you can go to the next slide. So Rukashula to Lakewood, again, the lease expires at the end of the year. Um, it has $738,000 per year lease and that's expected to increase in fiscal year 26. The.
And on top of the 738, they pay about 85,000 in utilities. So their actual cost per year for that building is already over 800,000 per year.
And the current facility again has no cafeteria and those students that qualify for introduced meals will have meals available in the school. Um, there's minimal renovations, if any, that would need to take place at Lakewood um, to house Rukashula. And then looking at um, Stream Academy into Nunaca Valley. Their current facility again doesn't support, support growth for their charter of 300 all. The current facility doesn't have no cafeteria, so the students who qualify for free introduced meals. Um, would have meals available. The current facility has no gym. Sports that, it does this, the Nunaca Valley um, campus does support outdoor and experiential education better than their current facility. Um, we did look at even like looking at Baxter as an option for Stream Academy and we're going, we're kind of diving in and looking at that as another. Option possibly as a co-location kind of thing, but um, and that Baxter would also have the sports outdoors and experiential education. And the school is large enough um, for their enrollment growth. And you look at Highland to Nunaca Valley, um, again, we talked about their ba, their fund balance, lowest of 270,000. Who provide financial relief for that program. Once again, it has no cafeteria and the students who qualify for free use meals would have meals available. The current facility has no gym. The school is large enough to support enrollment growth. And then it would free up space here at the Ed Center to consolidate the ACT program. And Family Partnership. Another thing that we've talked about in regards to Highland and Nunaca Valley, it is, it is actually. Very close to here, right down the street. The students that go to Nunaca Valley primarily live on this side of town. And it is close to a bus stop. And many of our students that go to Highland Tech ride the city bus to get here. So it has that option as well. Questions?
So I say two questions. We'll go to member Lessons and member Bellamy.
Um, I just wanted to go back a little bit uh, in time to the. Um, I think it was, I think it was the December 17th work session. It had pictures, uh, these pictures of um. Like maps of where students live. And I don't, maybe this is just an administrative point of order. I don't. See it on this. So I might got, I might have things a little bit mixed up, but I have it printed out from the administration and it does show that. Certainly there's a concentration of students. Um, there are many students going, attending the Alaska Native Cultural Charter School. On the east side, but there's a, there are blobs all over. So could you just help me understand a little bit more about where are students who attend? ANCCS.
Right. I, I could expand that. I could expand those maps. Um. There was a lot of different circles and some of the circles were as low as one student. And so when you have these little circles everywhere and now you're trying to make those maps fit in, in covering fif-. Fifty miles and make it fit when it's one inch tall, it does, it, it doesn't really provide. The best possible uh, view. That's why we, we handed, um, to get, to make it a little clearer. Um, we gave all the board members that big chart that showed um, where students were in boundary for schools. And what schools they actually attended. And, and it is true for alternative and charter schools. Um, they're, they're all over the map, but when you look at something like ANCCS, I think there's. It's a really small number, less than five, so I, I won't. Um, living up near Mirror Lake in that vicinity. So although it's true, they stretch from Mirror Lake all the way to, to. Um, Girdwood, this, the numbers are smaller, um, the farther you get away and, and ANCCS has. Historically typically been on the east side. Um, and, and that's why originally we were looking at. You know, potentially if, if Baxter would have closed, that would have been a really optimal place for them, as well as what. What they have done in the Abbott Loop community is picked up students who still could walk to school. Um, and of course, we'll be talking about ANCCS shortly, a, a little bit more. Um. But you know, when you look at Stream, their charter says they're an east side school. Um, I'd have to check ANCCS's to see, but I think if you look at that big graph we gave you, you can see where all the kids came from and what school they went to.
It's very interesting to look at where, like how many from the Cassoon area go to ANCCS now.
Okay, member Lessons, we'll go to member Bellamy, then member Higgins.
So on page four, I just have a clarif- clarifying question uh, under the um, facility leases. So Highland currently pays.
ASD.
ASD that, okay.
There are subleases.
There are subleases. So if we put, so we're putting, if they're planning to put. So we're not doing anything, I guess, with um, Whaley right now.
Um, I'm going to talk about them shortly.
Okay, I'll be quiet.
Yes.
Thank you, member Bellamy.
You know, we actually did look at Lakewood for Whaley. Um. Either way, we were going to spend a lot of money on Whaley and that's why I want to talk about them at the end.
I will hold. Thank you.
Thank you, member Bellamy and member Higgins.
Oh, I'm up. Okay, sorry. I got questions on both of them. Well, one, in regards to Nunaca Valley. What, where are we at as far as plans on anything at all with the Alaska Native Cultural Charter School? Now, they're currently in a facility. You, you were successful last time of adding that, that school is going to be eliminated, leveled. Uh, here in a couple of years and they have nothing. And so regardless of the cost, uh, it, it, why weren't they in the consideration of this as well?
They are. They're on my last slide for today's briefing.
Okay, so they're, they're not off the list.
We are going to talk about Alaska Native, yes.
Okay. Then the other one is Lakewood. I've, I've talked to uh, staff and parents and parents get pretty emotional both sides of the way. But the issue of possibly moving Stella into Lakewood and freeing up Stella, because Stella is 44,000 square feet at Lakewood 61. Stella's got three uh, portables. You push sixth grade in there, so it's already uh, uh, put some issues in regards to it. The number of additional optional uh, classes they can have is limited. I don't know whether or not parents would go for a lynch mob at me or not, or I don't know whether they would worship it. They, there's a lot of mixed views on here. I'm going to be honest. But I, I don't see that being eliminated consideration. The optional schools or charter schools are similar. I mean, funding is different. But it does seem like that's a, a potential to at least throw out there for consideration. And I think it would benefit that school. I think uh, Rukashula could benefit with Stella as well. Uh, so that would be it, but that's 61,000. That's, that's larger than what Stella is right now. I think Stella's about 44, but I have to go look. And then compare that to where uh, Rukashula is at. That's still larger than what they've got right now and it gives them a, a good location. The only concern with that has been bus service, but I found out there's very few actually doing the bus type thing. So um, and that facility would provide them an opportunity to do additional programs they haven't been able to do now, because they're. When we added sixth grade there, it makes a difference on doing it and, and within that. So has any thought been given to that school as well?
You know, honestly, until uh, until I found out you've been over to Stella a few times, talked to the principal, we had not considered it. Um, so I know there must be some small group that's looking at moving Stella. Um, I think you know that, that at Stella, most of those kids leave during lunch. And they eat in the, the restaurants and stuff near Stella. There's really nothing at Lakewood. But we did not do a deep analysis, because we honestly aren't aware of. A, a critical need to move Stella.
And I would also add on to that is we didn't push sixth grade into Stella. Stella's community requested. Us to allow sixth graders to go to Stella and they knew that all of the different things, having a relos, all that kind of stuff. When they did that vote. And they, they came to us asking to actually increase sixth grade into the school. So we, that. Stella just hasn't been on our radar, um, as they haven't really had issues.
Thank you, member Higgins, uh, member Wilson.
You had mentioned that, that it is in Stream's charter to stay on the east side. Um, is, is it? Does Highland have it within their charter to, to be on any particular side of town or serve any community?
I'm going to phone anybody right now. I, I don't. I don't know. I can find out and uh, we can put it in Board Connect this Friday.
I have a follow-up.
Yeah.
Um, my only other question is, it's currently on, on the list of um, regarding Highland. Is it would lower the balance of the, their charter school? It would be, it would pro- provide a financial relief to move them to Nunaca. And just if you could clarify how that would provide a financial relief in, in that they are currently in an ASD building, correct?
Sure. No. So Highland pays 500,000 a year, a little bit over 505 to ASD for the past. Andy, I don't know how many years, at least 10 years. Um, ASD has picked up 75,000 of Highland's lease. Because they couldn't afford the full equal split of that lease. So if they were to go to um, Nunaca Valley, they would. I mean, literally be saving a little over 500,000 a year. They'd still have utilities to pay for. They'd still have custodial, all those kind of things. Um, but it would put them in a, a, a better position. So for Anchorage Stream, because they have such a cheap. Not cheap, a much more affordable lease at just over $300,000 and their lease includes custodial. Um, it actually would cost them a little bit more um, per year to move to that, move to Nunaca Valley. But it would be offset by the ability to go from 180 to 300 and have all of those trail systems and outdoor areas. Um, that go all the way up to Russian Jack, which they don't really have that kind of outdoor classroom. Space at this time. So um, sure, they would pay a little bit more, but for what they would get out of it. Um, if they really grew to 300, they would get more revenue and they would quickly overcome the fact that it costs a little more because they had to pay for custodial.
Thank you, member Wilson. I'm going to jump in with a question, um, which I think maybe where member Wilson was headed, but at least for my own clarity purposes, as well as for anyone watching. Um, what I think I understand is it's current practice that school districts can't charge rent for a district facility. In this case, this, the facility that Highland is using is not a district facility. Is that why they're paying a lease payment?
It's a lease and they pay for the square footage of our overall lease. So it's, we're, it's not a building that we're the building manager for because we're a tenant as well. So we're a tenant, they're a tenant, they pay their portion.
And.
Which is different from having an ASD building.
Sure.
Plotted as, um, a school zone.
And then just one final point for clarity. Is the lease that we have with the, um, the owner of this property, is it with, is, um, does Highland have a direct lease with the owner of the property or is the lease between us and Highland?
Yeah, it's, it's just with us.
Understood.
And, and I think you'll remember last year, um, when we redid the lease, we had, we got incredibly favorable, um, rates. So we did reduce how much we were paying. Um, certainly curbed the growth that was going to happen for sure.
I appreciate that. Uh, Member Lessons.
Um, please correct me if I'm, if my memory is wrong here. When Klat Elementary was proposed for potential closure a couple of years ago, what I recall is that Highland, there was a, there was a prospect for moving Highland to Klat. And one of the objections that I feel like I heard at the time was that bus service was not readily accessible between, for where many Highland students were and where Klat is. And I guess the question is, what sort of bus services of it, if bus service is important to the Highland community, what sort of bus services then are available, um, sort of in the Nunaka area?
Last time immediately when we asked Highland if they wanted to move to Klat, they just said no. They said it's too far away. This is our area. The kids are going up and down, um, Northern Lights to get here and in this, in, and they just said no. It wasn't, it wasn't transportation. It was, this is where we live. This is our school.
Thank you, Member Lessons. Other questions before we allow administration to wrap up? I think going to the final portion of the presentation. Member Donley, apologies.
Thank you. Um, so do, do any other of the charter schools get, um, a similar lease subsidy as Highland, the seventy-five thousand dollars?
Not that I'm aware of.
Is it? Has we've been, you know, we've only had Aquarian in a, in a school district occupied building, correct?
For about twenty years?
Yeah, yeah.
Twenty plus years?
So it really hasn't been like a big pressing issue, but it seems to me as we move more of these schools into district facilities and it's, and the cost decrease fairly dramatically for some of them. There ought to be some consideration to balancing out the benefit among all the charter schools that are still paying for lease themselves. And I, um, I didn't know about the Highland seventy-five K, but that's an example of what I would think would be fair. If there was some sort of balancing out for other people's costs too. Has the, has the administration thought about that at all? I mean, if you just got one school getting it, it doesn't seem, you know, it doesn't seem fair and equitable.
Yeah. And the seventy-five thousand is generally because, um, if they vacated the space or the school ceased to exist, then the district, as we said, is the lease is between ASD and the lessor. So we're on the hook for that extra five hundred thousand. So it was an incentive for them to stay in this building thereby not, uh, settling the, the district with an extra five hundred thousand in cost that someone else wasn't paying. Um, but there is the, you know, the in-state statute, we can't legally charge like someone like Aquarian who's in a district facility rent. Um, so that's really kind of what precludes us from being able to make those adjustments. Like I couldn't take money from Aquarian and give it to other charter schools because they're not, uh, because they have a lease. So I don't know that we have the legal authority to kind of shuffle those funds around between charters that are in district facilities and not in facilities.
You know, that's not exactly what I was suggesting. What I was suggesting was for subsidizing one lease for seventy-five thousand, but none of the other charter schools have leases that are being in any way subsidized by the district. Wouldn't it be better to have a policy about that, like a, a, a set policy for dealing with that? So everybody was treated equally?
Sure. And we also have the issue with Rooka Shula is where they borrowed two million dollars ten years ago for their, to get that facility and they still owe us another ten years on that. So they did get a benefit from the district as well. Um, so I don't know, but yeah, I can see where you probably want a policy surrounding that.
Thank you, Member Donley. Are there other questions or comments before we allow administration to finish up their presentation? Hearing, seeing, Mr. Anderson, anything else before you open up for questions?
Okay. So this is our last slide. We have, uh, five minutes, but we all also have two weeks. So any input that the board wants to, uh, provide as, as we're building this memo. I, I did want to bring up some other discussion topics though, to think about. Um, we saw how emotional to an entire community a handful of students were when we talked about moving them into a school. Um, I, I personally, and, and I hope the board, uh, agrees as we look forward to next fall's CIP. I think it's time to do the right thing for Whaley. Um, I, I plan barring, um, big pushback from the board, uh, to have a Whaley design and renovation, a multi-year during each summer to renovate that building. Because even as you look at elementary schools, there would be a significant amount of renovation required in any of those. And I, I just feel like they've been pushed to the side long enough. And, um, you know, I, I know Jared and, and Sven feel the same way. It's time to take care of Whaley. And so not having a facility doesn't mean that, that, uh, we don't plan on making it a priority next fall. And, and of course, you know, the board will get to vote on, on the design first, then a renovation of the facility, and we'll discuss that probably, um, on one-on-ones or, or in other conversations. The second one is the last time we tried to get a fire suppression system for ANCCS, there, there weren't any bidders. Um, it wasn't a project that anyone in Anchorage was willing to take on. Um, if the board believes that we're going to close more schools and create an option for ANCCS, um, but between now and, and the next several months before we start talking next year's CIP, um, I think it's, I think it's, um, prudent to contemplate, do we do a little bit bigger renovation on ANCCS with a plan of having a long-term keep them there? Um, similar to what we did for Aquarian, we just put seven million dollars in their facility. Um, so I think there's precedent to do that, although I know just like I started this meeting saying, we have an amendment that says I can't talk about this, but we're going to do it anyway. And we also have a decision to close the school, but I want people to think about and be prepared to talk about. Um, we got to take care of the only Alaska native charter school in the district one way or another. And hopefully we'll have some conversations over the next few months, but I think, I think, um, it's either find another facility for them. They've got a little over three million dollars. That's not enough to buy a building. It's not enough to really anything on the APU campus, if that's where they were to build a new facility. And their, their school, um, committee hasn't really raised a significant amount of money. It's really been the money they put back when they were at East and at Abbott Loop, um, for the most part, other than about a hundred thousand. So this doesn't need to be discussed necessarily tonight, but, but I thought it was important, um, to, to be transparent about the direction we're headed because we only closed two. If Baxter had closed, we were going to recommend ANCCS. Um, but, but then the board chose to retain that school. And, and ANCCS is on a, a two-plus-year lifeline at this point. So I, I think we do need to discuss it one way or another, um, sometime in the next five months, six months. Um, we also are going to continue looking at other charter schools and other district programs to try to fill in some of that, um, space that's not being used for the schools because they're low capacity and that process will continue through the summer.
But Mr. Anderson, does that get us to the end of the presentation or do you still have more? Okay. Um, so I'll jump in like you with a couple of questions I've been saving to the end and then we'll go to Member Lessons. Um, we touched a bit on co-location for Baxter. Um, I just did some quick math with what's in our current CIP and what's in the enrollment dashboard. It looks like they're fifty-two to fifty-three percent, uh, full based off of the state's programmatic capacity, which I think we recognized isn't a perfect, perfect formula, but it gives us a ballpark. Um, it seems to me that the situation at Baxter is pretty ripe for potentially co-locating either ANCCS or, um, one of the charter programs we've discussed tonight. And so I guess my question is, have we talked about that with any of the charter school academic policy committees? Cause if their current enrollment is, um, it, it's Baxter's roughly two twenty or so, and we're projecting that to continue to decline. And it declined, I think, fifty or so students this year over year. Um, there's space for something else there. And I guess the question is, where are we at in examining how we do that?
You know, I, I, that's a good question. I looked at Baxter and, and if we were to have hypothetically moved Stream there, um, we would have had to move the SLC program, the Head Start and the Pre-K to another location to allow them any possible chance at actual growth. Um, their charter that is, is approved, um, says that their goal is to get to three hundred. And so, um, but I did also talk to the principal and I know at least one board member has, and the APC is not interested in sharing a school. Um, they like Baxter. They like, um, e- everything about it that's similar to Nunaka Valley about trails and green space and all those kinds of things. But they don't want to share a school, especially middle school kids who are much taller. In fact, they're taller than me for the most part, but they're certainly taller than the elementary kids. And trying to use one very small lunchroom for a middle school and an elementary school, de-sync that, de-sync the gym. Um, and knowing that they still couldn't grow very much at all. Um, and they couldn't achieve that objective to try to get to three hundred. I, I was told that the APC is not interested. So, um, ANCCS is, is three hundred strong right now. And so putting them in with Baxter, you would have to consider pushing out some grade, some of the grade levels at Baxter. And by the time you did that, there would be no need to have a Baxter because SLC Head Start Pre-K would also have to go because you'd have a school of three hundred coming in. And again, now you would have a principal for a really small number of students trying to share a gym and schedules and cafeteria in it. So for them and Stream, it, it did, the math didn't work. Um, either the math didn't work or Baxter was not going to look like Baxter anymore in order to make it work.
And then, um, just a quick follow-up, Highland Academy, is there any match there?
You know, the only reason we didn't look at Highland was because high school mixed with elementary. Um, and trying to segregate that school and, and it's this, the same challenges with, um, two completely different types of meal service, um, because high school kids don't eat the same portions, the same types of food that the elementary eats with the shrink wrap stuff. We would, it would take some, some pretty significant renovations to really make that kitchen much larger to be able to cook and serve like what we do for high school kids.
Thank you. And then, um, one other question, then we'll go to Member Lessons regarding the, the plan thus far. Um, at what point, if it hasn't happened already, um, has, will administration connect with, um, the Rokee APC regarding, um, transportation? Um, well, we've heard, the boards heard from current parents of the program who've expressed concern and indicate that they won't be able to attend. Um, if the proposal, which has been widely discussed in the school and, and been widely, um, sent to us via, um, electronic testimony is approved by the board. And so, um, hearing from current parents of the program who have said we'll have to withdraw from the school is disheartening. And so my, my assumption is that the, the school will want to partner with ensuring that those students can continue to attend. And so have those conversations started happening yet between administration and the academic policy committee? Um, or is that something that will be done before the proposal, between now and then, before when the proposals, um, goes to non-action status next month?
I think after tonight, it would be appropriate to talk to them if, if it looks like the board is at least aware that this is going to be on the board memo as a recommendation. But I think it was, it was certainly inappropriate, um, while we were still waiting on the board to make a decision which schools would close, to talk to any of the charter schools about transportation or anything else. And then of course we had Christmas break and here we are. Um, but yeah, I assume that would start pretty soon.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Member Lessons.
Be brief. I recognize we're over time. I guess I'm interested in understanding whether there's space capacity at, um, a couple of our middle schools to co-locate any, sort of the next, uh, iteration of Member Jacob's questions. Um, you know, is there space to co-locate any of these programs where there appears to be space, at least on their face for secondary students?
We can relook that. Um, I, I don't know that there's space anywhere to put a full charter school in. Um, if, if anything that was even remotely close, it'd be Mirror Lake, which is so far away from any charter school that, that, that would be a challenge, I think, to pull off, but we haven't looked at it. Um, I can't think of any other middle school that would, that, that really would have that kind of space. I've walked through all of them. I've seen some rooms that are vacant in some schools, but not like an entire wing, which is what it would take.
Member Lessons, Member Higgins, and then we'll need to wrap up for the day.
I'm up. Okay. Um, I, I want to go back real quick to the Alaska Native Cultural Charter School because right now you said there wasn't anybody interested in doing it. You went out for an RFP. I, I hope to get a copy of that later. I'll ask for that officially. And, 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 and when we, I know, but then we, then you, you argued that even fixing the, the, the fire suppression system wasn't a good investment because of the school condition and you recommended strongly against it. We had to destroy it. Now we're at the point that if they're going to do it and if we went for bond, it would have to be next year. You said there's two years in the state, in the cities where you said they're going to close it. So we have to hope that a bond gets approved or whatever the money is, and then go forward or else they're going to be without the school. I want to know what the plan is if, if we, if they can't stay at Abbott Loop for any reason, nobody's willing to fix it. You say it's not a good investment. What do you, what are you proposing that happens to the Alaska Native Cultural Charter School? Go back to East High School or what?
So it's a little premature to, to know what is going to be on, um, the CIP next year. But my guess would be raise the roof, put in a real fire suppression system with a taller roof. And on that type of project, we're almost certainly going to be able to get bidders. But we haven't, we haven't done a design yet. We haven't, when you ask for what's the detailed plan, I, I don't have one because we only closed two schools. So I don't have the plan, but when we only closed two, then I, I wanted to bring it up now saying, let's start talking about ANCCS because we've got to come up with something. And I don't know exactly what that something will be. But I agree with you. I'm in violent agreement with you, which is rare. But, but tonight I am that we need to talk about ANCCS and we need to find a solution.
Probably feels uncomfortable, huh? Um, that's okay.
Pretty awkward.
And, and the other question I have is what Rooka Shula, if they go into that, into Lakewood, are they willing to continue to allow space in there for the preschool or for other things that are there that, that area is right now benefiting from? And because that's a lot of square footage. Or is it a all or nothing type of approach, which many charter schools have? We, we don't want to share anything. We don't want anybody else to have anything. We're, we're separate from you. Well, they weren't separate. They're part of the ASD. And is that, has that been a discussion point?
I, again, because we hadn't got to this point where we were putting together a memo for repurposing. We haven't had any of those discussions with anybody. Um, but once we put a memo forward and the next school board meeting is non-action, it will be time for, for those discussions with each of them. And then as we figure out what's the art of the possible or what are the hurdles from an APC perspective or a charter school perspective? or a charter school perspective, or frankly, even from a district perspective, um, you know, we'll, we'll bring those back to the board. But it, it would have been inappropriate to have a detailed plan with Rokea Shula on a school that we didn't even know if it would be recommended.
And at this point, we have gone through planning for where to move preschools and that kind of stuff. We have a detailed plan. We're moving forward with that already. But we haven't had any discussions about the co-location.
Thank you, Member Higgins. Um, it is now five oh seven. Um, to the Administration, is there something you need from us today before we end our work session to move forward?
I just want to take credit for agreeing with, uh, Pat tonight.
Duly noted.
I guess one thing, though, I, I would say, I think we would like some ideas over the course of the next couple of weeks as to what direction the Highland way, if you have any strong opinions on Highland or Stream for Nunaka, because we'll be putting, needing to put one of those on that memo.
Sure. Um, do you want to do that now, or are you asking for board members to connect to Administration offline?
I think it would be best if board members have questions, you can set up a meeting with their team or send an email, um, between now and the next couple of weeks. Otherwise, um, we'll begin the process of deliberating.
Okay. Uh, Member Lessons.
Um, maybe this is good for a follow-up conversation, but when I look at the CIP, Clark has program capacity of over twelve hundred students and a current enrollment of six hundred eighty-five students. So I guess when I just look at the numbers without thinking about faces, it's one of the schools in my mind that's really underutilized right now. And I guess I'd be interested in learning more if there's a way we can co-locate programs or options to that school.
Thank you, Member Lessons. Sounds like we have a new RFI. Um, hearing, seeing no other conversation, we'll end our work session today at five oh nine PM. Thank you, everyone.